I call the November seventeenth regular Besar City Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join us in the education led by Pastor McLeod or McLeod from United Methodist Church, Woodlawn United Methodist Church, followed by Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. If you've ever looked at the Ohio State seal, you'll notice that it actually has a Bible verse. That Bible verse reads, "With man this is impossible, but with God all things are possible." And so, God, tonight, we pray that the things that are impossible for us will be made possible by your strength. May the discussion tonight be civil, even when the issues are heated. May it be respectful. Most of all, Lord, we pray for those who are afflicted by the COVID-19 pandemic, both around the world and in our local community. Give everyone here wisdom as they lead and guide and navigate the currents of government. In Christ's name we pray on that.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. McKeever?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Me?
Here.
Truka?
Here.
Sharick?
Here.
Foak?
Present.
Alsop?
Here.
Kevin Sainz here?
Yep.
Yes, here.
Okay, before you are the minutes from the November third regular meeting. Does anybody have any questions on them?
Are they good?
Well, I don't see anybody here to crack them. So, need a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion then.
Somebody second it?
I'll second.
All favor say aye.
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 Um, granting permission for visitors to speak. Is there any visitors that would like to address council? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, friends. I'm Rhonda Rowland, 4571 Holm Center Road, Besirus, Ohio 44820. There we go?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. You know, a lot has happened since the last time we were together, but one thing remains the same. Besirus is going to have a big birthday. Happy birthday, Besirus, and it's going to be big, right?
Right.
Okay. You know, I'd like to take a moment to thank someone in this room who had a vision, who had a vision over a year and a half ago that we were going to have a big celebration for our community, and it was going to involve everyone. And as I talk tonight, I just want for you to think about the word togetherness, together, okay? But the man I'm speaking about is our mayor, Jeff Reeser. And I just want to thank him for the vision that he had. One year and a half ago, he put together a team, a team of commissioners. He put Kelly Patterson in charge alongside with Randy Fisher as her partner. At that point, I was asked to be on that commission along with some fellow friends, the Norton's to say the least, and have the utmost respect for them, as we all should, right? Our founding family of Besirus. We've worked very hard over the last year and a half to put together plans, events, to be able to celebrate this wonderful town that we all live in, okay? I'm very excited about that. Obviously, with COVID, we've had to take a couple steps back. If you remember, last time I was here, Kurt, do you remember? I told you I bought a blue dress. I was going to wear a blue dress to our gala when we opened up on New Year's Eve, right?
I remember that meeting that you were here talking about everything you guys had planned.
Okay, and I had a blue dress that I was going to wear to that gala, all right? I had to hang that dress to the back of my closet. Why? Because obviously, you know, it's more important we take care of our community members here, and their health and well-being is at stake, right? So, that has been postponed, not canceled, postponed until 12:31:21, so that we end the big celebration with that gala instead of kicking it off, okay? That's just an example of some of the work. We were ready pretty much to pull the plug on that gala, but we had to step back, all right? But we're willing to do that because we have the interests of our community at heart. So, the vision that Mr. Reeser had, it took a lot of planning and preparation, okay? So, we've spent, again, countless hours working on this project. But you know what? This really hits me is that Mr. Reeser did not wait until April of 2021 and say, "Oh, by the way, I'm going to get this person and that person, this person, that person, to come together to celebrate Besirus." What do you think that would look like? What do you think that would look like as a town, you know? We've got to put ourselves on the map as Besirus, Ohio, right? We're going to celebrate this town. We're going to do it in a good fashion, okay? So, in order to do that, there's got to be organization, and there's got to be planning, and there's got to be what? Togetherness, 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 togetherness. Okay, so that's the vision. That's the word I want you to think about, all right? When I think about Besirus, I just want to take a moment and, you know, why? Why am I spending all this time? Am I getting paid for it? Nope. Is Randy Fisher getting paid for it? Nope. Is any of the commission being paid for it? Nope. I spent seventeen years on the way for school board, okay? I retired in December of 2019 from that school board and joined the commission at that time, okay? I wanted to step back and just enjoy life a little bit, you know what? But I have a passion to help things, make things happen, all right? I love Besirus. Besirus is my hometown. I've lived here my entire life. Bruce Truka, your family had a beautiful furniture store right here in our wonderful town for many years. My brother helped deliver furniture there. I graduated with your mother, Doug. I'm telling you, my age, darn it, right? Rob Rathlet, we graduated together. And Mark McKeever, who knows? Maybe we're almost cousins, right? Who knows? Okay, all right, okay. So, that being said, we have roots here, don't we? We have roots. There is a reason why you are on the Besirus City Council, is there not? Is there not? James, why are you on Besirus City Council? You have a passion for Besirus, right?
Absolutely.
You have a passion for the community, right? You want to put Besirus on the map, right?
Yep.
You want to join our commission? You want to join us? And together, we're going to make this happen?
Sure.
Okay, let's do it. I put down a few thoughts that I will refer to my notes because I get a little passionate, and I want to make sure I hit these home, okay? So, I'm going to read a little bit to you. When I'm thinking about 2020, there are a lot of negative things that we could all say, right? About 2020, let's don't be those people. Let's think positive. It's been a hard year for all of us, and while we acknowledge those difficult moments, we can also look forward to the future with hope. When I think about the future, I believe that it's bright. It is a rising full of possibility and healing, and our community does need healing, doesn't it? All right. Here and now, we have the opportunity to speak that hope and healing over a town that is running ragged, just like the rest of the world. We have the gift of leading our community toward the type of optimism that can bring light into darkness. We have that opportunity, guys, and ladies, we can do this, and we can do this with what? As we work?
Together.
Together, exactly. We must ask ourselves, why do we do what we do? As we plan the Bicentennial Celebration, it gives us the perfect opportunity to reflect on why we love Besirus, our home, and why it's worth celebrating. Do we believe in the future of our city? Do we want to put in the effort to bring about the said future? Do we believe that we can move forward into healing and a unity which is hard-won, but is it so worth the battle? I say it is. I say it is. Countless hours have already been put into this, all right? We just have to execute the plan. Um, I thank God that I look, as I look to my left and my right, I can see unique threads that make up the fabric of our community. I just heard a beautiful story from Mrs. Sharick here about her husband and how he celebrated in 1971 when Besirus was 150, with a beard and all. There's a lot of stories out there just waiting to be heard, and our community members want to share those, do they not? All right. We are all vital pieces of the tapestry, and the closer together we stay woven, the clearer the picture we show to the world. Let's put Besirus on the map. When Besirus marked its 150-year anniversary, just what we were talking about, the Telegraph Forum quoted this statement, "It is a heritage to those who celebrate our bicentennial in the year 2021 and carry on, then, as we do today, the torch that was handed to us." As our forebearers said, "Let that torch," and they lit that torch. What was the flame that they were talking about? What was that flame? Well, I'm going to tell you, Doug Folk, I'm going to use this example. Doug has met with the commission, and he came in, and he obviously has the skill set of fireworks. Okay, he came in, and we didn't dictate to him, "Doug, we want you to do this, this, and this. We respect you that you have that knowledge of fireworks. So, you shared with us, you made your recommendation, we were all in. It was unity, it was community, it was love, it was togetherness." Kevin Myers, Kevin Myers, can you hear me?
I can, friend.
Okay, Kevin Myers has been phenomenal in the support that he has given this commission with regard to the Broadhurst Festival, with regard to food vendors, with regard to entertainment. He has just really stepped up and been a part of this plan. Because why? Because Kevin Myers believes in Besirus. I think we all would agree with that, right? Okay, and Lisa, I didn't mean to forget you. We've been together since elementary, right?
I'm here.
Okay, all right. This flame that they were talking about in 1971 is us. It's us. It's you. It's me. It's our mayor. It's Randy. It's our pastor. It's Mrs. Sharick. It's our police. It's us. We're that flame. What's it said here? Those people in 2021 are going to carry on that torch. Don't we want to be talked about in fifty more years as carrying on the torch, as passing that torch? Doesn't that sound me, Kurt? To be able to pass that torch on, they talked about us in 1971. I was, oh, where were we, Rob? Five, six, maybe?
I wasn't born yet.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That means church. Now, wait. Okay.
Words aren't supposed to lie.
All right. So, basically, it was a flame of history and hospitality, a bratwurst enjoyed at shared tables. It was a fire struck on the flint of passion and understanding that there is nowhere else in the world quite like our pocket of peace and prosperity. It was their spark which brought to life in the midst of a world that might have looked different then, but held tightly to the familiar joy of being citizens of Besirus and leaving a legacy for those yet to come. It's not just about the parties and the events and the, you know, the hoopla over the bicentennial. We want to leave a legacy. We want to know that in 2020, 2021, who sat at this table? Who sat at the council table when all this happened, when we put this into motion, right? You want to be part of that legacy. We want to do it?
Together.
Together, exactly. All right, just like our friends in 1971, we are passing the torch forward, and in doing so, we are investing in the future. You guys, never again will the good folks of Besirus have the privilege of celebrating 200 years together, together. This is once-in-a-lifetime chance to instill the values of community into events that are both educational and fun, to build a foundation of kindness and resilience that lasts us the next 20 years and beyond, and beyond, right? Okay, the bicentennial events are more than just dates on our calendars, right? They, that's our chance to say who we are, where we've been, and where are we going? And where are we going? I say, James, me, we're going forward. Will you go forward with me?
Absolutely.
This is big. This is big, right? It will take us all working together, won't it? Look at the word Besirus. Is there an I in Besirus, Bruce Truka?
Uh, no.
Nope, nope. Todd Hill, is there a you?
Of course, there's two.
There's two. You know what that means? That means you, and 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 me, right?
Yes.
Together, together. Love, 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 kindness, 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 community, community, community. Let's put our hands in. Let's move forward.
Together.
Together. Let's celebrate Besirus. Happy birthday, Besirus. Let the party begin. Thank you for your time.
Does anybody else want to address council?
Hi, my name is Wanda Sharick. I live at 1485 Oak Ridge, Rockford, Besirus, Ohio. And I'm here to talk about two things. Well, not really talk, I'm going to ask questions on some. First of all, there was a public hearing this afternoon, and I'm sorry, I work all day, so I wasn't able to attend it, and I wondered if I could get a report on that. Public hearing sent to me from council president or?
I was totally unaware that there was a public hearing.
You're going to have to talk because I'm not very curious, and your voice is very loud.
I was unable, I did not know there was a public hearing in this council chamber this afternoon.
It was supposed to be at four o'clock this afternoon.
Yes, there was three parcels of business on that.
Talk up, please. I'm hard of hearing.
There was three orders of business at that meeting.
Okay, there was no public hearing about the Alavenue extension?
No, it was a zoning meeting.
There's a zoning meeting.
It was zoning, the BCA.
Um, I just want to know if I can get a report sent to me on my emails on that meeting? And also, I would like to ask the law director if he could go back to legislation that was passed. And as I understand it, I would just like to know if any legislation has been passed on the Alavenue and the exits and entrances onto that road because the properties that were built by months, we're told that there was restrictions because the state helped build that Alavenue extension, and that we're only allowed to have so many entrances onto that. And I just want to know if the law director can check into that for me and let me know if that is a legal binding legislation and how long it's good for, okay? And then, the second thing I'd like to talk about, and I did pull my mask down, but I'm six feet away from all of you, is I'm real concerned that our community really needs to step up and take into consideration what's happening across, country across the world, but especially our numbers here in Crawford County. We have so many COVID incidences going on, and I was on Election Day, the 3rd of November. I assisted one of my coworkers at the pole, a Colonel Crawford, who became ill. I helped her get to the bathroom. I helped her get a chair. Had hands on with her because we thought she had vertigo, and I too had vertigo, so I was being very helpful because I understand how that feels. A week from the 3rd, on a Tuesday, I was headed to Mansfield to my office to work when I was told by an election official that I needed to go back home because the lady that I had helped that day tested positive for COVID. So, that was one week that I've been out around the public doing all my things, and I do wear my mask religiously, and I really don't go a lot of places, but because of my age, I'm on a high risk. So, I immediately went home and got my granddaughter, who was also working with this person, and we went to Mansfield, and we're tested for COVID. Now, this is one week after I was exposed to it. It was on Tuesday, I got tested. That Saturday, I got my test results. Now, I quarantined from that Tuesday to that Saturday. Friday, the Saturday before I got, I got my test results on Saturday. Friday, the health department finally called me to tell me that I had been exposed on the 3rd. And they told me I had to quarantine till the 17th. This was the 13th, and I'm sorry, but that is just not adequate timing for our health department. Now, on the, on the Tuesday that I tested, which was one week after I was exposed, I started quarantining. Now, I have a friend who tested, was not feeling good on that Tuesday, which was a week after the 3rd, which was the 10th, and she went to Marion to get tested. She tested positive, and her son tested positive. They found that results out this Monday, which was from that Tuesday till Monday before they got the results. The health department still has not contacted her and her son to tell them that they need to quarantine or even do any kind of tracing. Now, I feel very sorry for our health department, and that's why I'm here tonight, because they are overwhelmed with what's going on in our community with COVID. They cannot keep up with calling people and letting them know you were with somebody who had COVID and you need to be tested and you need to quarantine. So, as this all goes on, and the longer we are allowed to be out running around not knowing that we have been next to someone who had COVID, we are going to see our numbers continue to go up. So, I guess I'm asking council, is there any way you can help fund that health department so they can do a better job? I don't in any way condemn what they're doing. They are understaffed, and we need to step up because this community wants to celebrate. And to celebrate, we've got to be healthy, and to be healthy, we've got to take this infection seriously. And I see people tonight who really, I don't know if you're taking it seriously, but I have a nephew-in-law, my niece's husband, who passed away because of COVID. So, it's hit my family drastically. I have a granddaughter who tested positive, and she didn't have very many symptoms. But my niece's husband knew about testing positive for COVID. One day, three days later, he was dead. This is happening in our community, and these people are not numbers. They are friends. They are neighbors. They are relatives. And we have got to take this influenza seriously if we want to have a good celebration next year. So, please, if you can do anything to help the health department and help our hospitals, please do whatever you can do, but drastically, we do need better knowledge, much faster than what we're getting it, on being exposed to someone who is positive and then taking the chance of passing it on to ten more people who could be my age and die. Thank you.
Just to follow up with Rhonda, I, I do know that the health department has gotten a lot of grant money from the state, and that has pretty much all went to contact tracing, manpower. And I, I think it's been at least $50,000.
Go away now.
I think it's at least been $50,000 the state has given our health department for?
I hate to tell you, but I haven't heard a word you said.
I'll, I'll talk to you after me.
Oh, I'm going home. I haven't read it. I'm going to have to pick up a phone call. You can call, or it's stuck in a meeting.
Does anybody else want to address council? Hearing none, we're going to move on to communications and petitions.
Yes, we just have one letter. This is addressed to city council dated November 10. Attention to the council president, dear city council members, this is from the Besirus Public Library. Dear city council members, the Besirus Public Library Board of Trustees has three board members whose terms will expire on December 31, 2020. All three members, Gerard Dolan, Kathleen Fisk, and Peter Maynard, would like to be reappointed to the board for a term of three years. The Besirus Public Library Board of Trustees would like the approval of Besirus City Council to reappoint these three. Thank you, Stephanie D. Buchanan, Director, Besirus Public Library, and then to refer to the economic development.
Second.
All favor, all opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Were you both in on the in favor or the opposed?
In favor.
Okay.
I'm in favor.
Standing committee reports, Mr. Truka.
Okay. Saris City Council Joint Regular Committee Meeting, Thursday, November 5, 2020, at 6:00 PM, and members present were Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, James, me, myself, C. Aaron Sharick, Doug Foak, and Lisa Alsop. Saris City Joint Regular Committee Meeting was called to order by McKeever at 6:00 PM. Service committee was 6:01 PM to 6:42 PM. Number two, public participation, noting the council passed legislation on September 1, 2020, stating that the committee shall approve their meeting minutes during their individual committee meetings. The clerk suggested that going forward, all council committees be convened during all joint regular committee meetings to at least approve minutes and/or consider any open projects in the interest of allowing minutes to be approved in a timely manner. Council members expressed approval of the suggestion. Law Director Rob Rathlet noted that the Saris codified ordinances do not address whether all committees can or must speak during every joint regular committee meeting. Phil Chehanowitz, 310 South Spring Street, addressed the topic of building permit notifications, which is on the plating committee's agenda for the evening. He expressed concern that the property owners can obtain permits for structures, such as fences, without their neighbors being aware of the additions until they have been erected. He asked if the city considered notifying residents when building permits have been applied for, and again, when they are granted. Council President Kurt Fanghauser questioned whether the city would want to get involved with easements when it's not the practice outside the city. All right, so, service committee was called to order by myself at 6:01 PM. Members present were Lisa Alsop, Kevin Myers, C. Aaron Sharick, and myself, Chair. Number one, county water line. I restricted materials projected costs and revenues that would result from the transfer of Crawford County water and sewer systems to the city, incorporating both in-town water rates and out-of-town rates. Incorporated into the figures were city water line expansion along Stetzer Road and to the village of Nevada. I noted that the county wishes to get out of the water and sewer business and that assuming control of the systems would be financially beneficial to the city as part of any, as part of any transfer of existing water and sewer balances totaling $162,607 would be moved from the county to the city. Engineer Lynn McKeever noted that the systems would be debt-free once transferred to the city. It was noted that the private water distribution companies are interested in making inroads into the county. Concerns were expressed about whether the city would take a financial hit if water line expansion to Nevada fails or falls through, but I noted that new water customers can be anticipated as the city expands its lines outside the city. Myers made a motion to request emergency legislation to have the city assume ownership of the county's water and sewer systems with a second by Sharick. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, approval of the minutes. Myers made a motion to accept the minutes for the committee's October 20, 2020 special meeting with a second by Sharick. Motion passed by voice vote. Myers made a motion to accept the minutes for the committee's October 22, 2020 regular meeting with a second by Sharick. Motion passed by voice vote. Number three, access TV. Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner noted that the council meetings haven't been televised for several months due to the personnel and equipment issues, and that he had reached out to a consulting firm to upgrade the equipment by the end of the year using the CARES funds. He has not re- He has not received a quote yet. The firm is also working with the Village of Crestline. There were no questions. I recessed the service committee at 6:42 PM.
Anybody have any questions for service committee? Moving on to the finance committee, Mr. McKeever.
Yeah, plan, looking at the wrong spot here. Okay. Planning was, planning committee met Thursday, November 5th, 2020, from 6:57 PM to 7:45 PM. Members present, Bruce Truka, Doug Vogt, James Mead, and myself, Chair. Number one, approval of minutes. Vicky Deschon, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, distributed materials detailing requests of amendments to the minutes of the committee's October 1st special meeting. Specifically, she requested, under item number one, the inclusion of, in parentheses, amendment requested by V. Deschon on 10/5/2020. Verbatim transcript as follows. Deschon asked why the city is not now responsible for the CoroKincora infrastructure, accepted by resolution number 249, 2001. Since in the June 4th, 2020 plating committee meeting audio recording, Lynn McKeever stated that the hump in the sanitary sewer began in Phase 1 and encompassed five homes. In addition, Deschon requested, under item number one, the deletion of, in parentheses, amendment requested by V. Deschon on 10/8/2020 to include the following. At the plating committee meeting on October 8th, 2020, Deschon requested that the above amendment was requested by her at the special full council meeting on October 5th, 2020. In addition, Deschon requested, under item number one, the deletion of amended, in parentheses, amended amendment requested by V. Deschon on 10/8/2020 to include the following. At the October 5th, 2020 special full council meeting, Deschon specifically detailed in verbatim, in verbiage, the item number one in October 1st, 2020 plating committee meeting minutes with which she did agree. Truka made a motion to so amend the minutes of the committee's October 1st, 2020 special meeting with a second by Mead. Motion passed by voice vote. Mead made a motion to approve the minutes of the committee's October 8th, 2020 regular meeting with a second by Truka. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, River Street rezoning proposal. Council received a letter from the City Planning Commission dated September 11th, 2020, requesting that the appropriate committee take up a proposing reclassification of properties from apartment residential, AR, to general business, GB, at 117, 121, 221, 223, 225, 229, 285, A through C, 305, and 315, River Street. The apartments there contain one large building that a tenant, as suggested, could be used as a one-person laser engraving business. The building could also be used for storage for materials needed to maintain the apartments and possibly an office. Council had a public hearing on the matter on October 27th, 2020. Zoning Administrator Landon Hill noted that opposition to the rezoning proposal was voiced at the hearing. He added that in lieu of granting the rezoning proposal, the committee would look at amending Visirus Codified Ordinance 1187.03A, which currently states that the home occupations shall be considered as a, as an accessory or conditional use as specified in the respective zoning districts of the ordinance, and that the use shall be clearly and incidental and secondary to residential use of the dwelling and not more than 25% of dwelling unit floor area to devote, is devoted to the home occupation. The clause would have to amend, be amended to change 25% to 100% to accommodate the specific use. It was noted that requests for zoning variances are addressed on a case-by-case basis, which gives the city more control over the process. Property owner Joshua Lighty, 118 South Sandusky Avenue, stated that he just wants to pursue the simplest solution. It was suggested that Lighty apply for a zoning variance for his specific use. Number three, zoning for bed and breakfast. Zoning Administrator Landon Hill noted that interest was expressed in property at Whetstone Street and Beale Avenue for use as a bed and breakfast, but that, that use is only permitted in the downtown business district, given that a zoning variance could not have been granted in this case. Hill suggested that considering this as a conditional or permanent use, permitted use in other zoning districts may be worth exploring. Whether Airbnb rentals should become zoning, a zoning issue for the city was also discussed. The matter was continued. Building permit notification. During the public participation portion of the joint regular committee meeting, Phil I can't say it.
Hey, can you follow us while you're not talking?
Chichanowicz, 310 South Spring Street, expressed concerns that property owners can obtain permits for structures such as fence without their neighbors being aware of the additions until they have been erected. He asked the city, asked that the city consider notifying residents when building permits have been applied for and again when they are granted. The zoning administrator asked that if the committee considers any such changes, his office be consulted. Council President Kirk Van Khauser noted that language has been added to the city's building slash zoning permit application form, which states that approval does not approve of or establish any property boundaries or supersede any private easements, and that the property owners are responsible for ensuring development is not in conflict with any private easements on the property. He suggested that easement dispute should be addressed by the courts. Chichanowicz added that the problem from his perspective is that the city is not treating both parties equally when there is, when there's a dispute. It was noted that increasing the scope of notifications would likely increase the cost of the permit fee. The matter was continued. McKeever recessed the plating committee at 7:45 PM.
Hey, you two there, conference call in. Somebody's got noise in the background, and it keeps banging and clanging, and it's coming through real disruptive. So, I just wondered if you could kind of be more.
I took it off the speakerphone.
Can you mute yours?
Can you just mute it?
Yeah.
Okay, unless you're talking, then you can unmute it. Thank you. Okay, anybody got any questions for plating committee? Hearing none, we're going to have the health and safety committee report is going to be read by the council clerk.
I got it. Finance.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to keep going with finance.
Finance committee met Thursday, November 5th, 2020, 7:45 to 7:55 PM. Members in attendance, Kevin Myers, Bruce Truka, James Mead, and myself, Chair. One, approval of minutes. Vicky Deschon, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, distributed materials detailing requests of amendments to the minutes of the committee's October 8th, 2020 regular meeting. Specifically, Deschon requested, under item number three, at the bottom of page three and top of page four, the deletion of, in parentheses, quotation amendment requested by V. Deschon on 11/3/20. Deschon did not state that at the October 10th, 2020 council meeting, that the sentence reading in quotation, some committee members asked that the last paragraph of section five be changed to state that the work hours for the code enforcement officers shall be set by the law director as needed, not to exceed 28 hours in any work in any week or 1,000 hours. Amendment requested by V. Deschon in a year should read, some committee members asked that the last paragraph of section five be changed to state that the work hours for the code enforcement officer shall be set by the law director as needed, not to exceed 28 hours in any week or 1,000 hours per year. Instead, the minute should state that at the October 10th, 2020 council meeting, Deschon noted that the committee said the 1,000 hours need to be put back in. In addition, Deschon requested, under item number three, at the bottom of page three, the inclusion of, in parentheses, amendment requested by V. Deschon on 10/20/20 and 11/3/20. Line drawn through, some committee draw a line through, members asked at the last paragraph of section five be changed to state that the work hours for the code enforcement officers shall be set by the law director as needed to, not to exceed 28 hours in any week or 1,000 hours in an hour. Line drawn through, all that said, the 1,000 hour need to be put back in, parentheses. Myers made a motion to approve the October 8th regular meeting minutes as amended with a second by Truka. Motion passed by voice vote. Deschon distributed material detailing, requested amendments to the minutes of the committee's October 13th special meeting. Specifically, Deschon requested, under item number two, A, the deletion of amendment requested by V. Deschon on 11/5/20. The last sentence in section five was changed to state the work hours for the code enforcement officer shall be set by the law director as needed, not to exceed 28 hours in any week or 1,000 hours. Amendment requested by V. Deschon in a year, to cross out per, in a year, cross out the word per, in a year. In addition, Deschon requested, under item two A, the inclusion of amendment requested by V. Deschon, 10/20/20 and 11/3/20, the work hours for the code enforcement officer shall be set by the law director as needed, not to exceed 28 hours in any week or line drawn through up to 1,000 hours, line drawn through per, in a year. Myers made a motion to approve the October 13th, 2020 special meeting minutes as amended with a second by Mead. Motion passed by voice vote. Myers made a motion to approve October 20, 2020 special meeting minutes with a second by Mead. Motion passed by voice vote. Myers made a motion to approve October 22nd, 2020 regular meeting minutes with a second by Mead. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, ORC 731.05, powers of legislation authority. Myers suggested that when an appropriation is made by council for a specific purpose, a line item be created that specifies by title what that purpose is to eliminate, what that purpose is to eliminate any confusion. Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner observed that this has been done in the past with some items and noted that he will bring the subject up with the auditor. McKeever recessed finance at 7:55 PM.
Anybody have any questions for finance? Now, we will have the health and safety report by the council clerk.
Yes, I agreed to read all the health and safety minutes for the health and safety chair who's not physically present. This is the Thursday, November 5th, Health and Safety Committee meeting, 7:55, 10:00 PM. Members present were Bruce Truka, James Mead, Mark McKeever, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Number one, approval of minutes. McKeever made a motion to approve the minutes for the committee's October 20, 2020 special meeting with a second by Mead. Motion passed by voice vote. McKeever made a motion to approve the minutes for the committee's October 22, 2020 regular meeting with a second by Mead. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, downtown street lighting. At the request of the committee, the city has installed new LED streetlights along South Sandusky Avenue between Rensselaer and Warren Streets on a trial basis to see how they look and get feedback from the community. Truka noted that Keys Electric has reached out to service foreman Jeff Dunn about bulbs but hasn't heard back from the city. Truka added that he picked up the bulbs himself, which are free for the duration of the trial. He detailed Keys Electric's bulb recommendations. Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner explained why Dunn hasn't contacted Keys yet but added that he will. Myers and Truka noted that they have received positive feedback about the trial lighting. Number three, ambulance service. The central joint ambulance district has requested a decision from council on whether the city plans to stay in the district or leave before the district's next meeting on November 18, 2020. Wagner noted that the administration has reached out to an ambulance company about what it could provide in the event the city leaves the district but doesn't have a detailed proposal yet. Myers detailed the cost the city could incur if it stays in the district and the possible costs if it leaves. The committee scheduled a special committee meeting for 5:00 PM on November 9, 2020 to discuss ambulance service. Myers recessed health and safety meeting at 28:00 PM, and that also closes out the joint regular committee meetings of Thursday, November 5. There was no public participation. After the health and safety meeting, Myers asked for motion to adjourn the joint regular committees and motion by McKeever and a second by Mead to adjourn at 8:28 PM. Motion passed.
Does anybody got any questions for health and safety? Just to clarify, these have not been approved. These are draft minutes. Just making sure that's on record. We had a special finance committee meeting on November 9th at 4:30. Mr. McKeever can let us know about that.
Yes, members present, Kevin Myers, Bruce Truka, James Mead, and myself, Chair. Special finance committee meeting was called by committee members for the limited purpose of discussing the 2021 budget. Number two, 2021 budget. The committee met with Acting Fire Chief Chad Swimley and Police Chief Neil Ostenheimer to discuss items in the 2021 budget. Specifically, the following items were discussed in relation to the fire department. A, retirement buyouts up to $50,000 in 2020. In 2022, 100,000. B, $71,828.40 in debt service for fire truck payment and a corresponding drop in the new vehicle line from $95,000 to zero. Specifically, the following items were discussed in relation to the police department. A, training and education up from $5,500 in 2020 to $10,000 because of the cost of ammunition. B, decision not to add a second school resource officer following a retirement. The committee scheduled another special meeting for 4:30 PM on November 16th for the limited purpose of continuing discussion on the 2021 budget. McKeever asked for a motion to adjourn the special finance committee meeting. Motion by Myers, second by Mead. Motion passed by voice vote. Meeting adjourned at 5:05 PM.
Anybody have any questions on that special finance meeting?
I do.
What's your vote?
Will our decision not to add a second school resource officer to replace the retirement, will that affect the funding that the state is providing for the resource officer? Is that just a one-year deal?
That was not true. Right.
I'm just asking, is that because that was to add a second one, not to just keep one? That was the, the reason the state got that funding to us was to add a second resource officer? So I'm just wondering, is that going to affect that at all?
I don't think there's any state funding.
That was, that was financed by the.
School board.
School board. Okay. Well, it's still, though, is, I mean, is our decision to take away one going to affect the reason that they did that, was they wanted a second one? So that's, I guess, at the end of the day, the reason I'm asking is, is this going to affect us having that funding?
I don't think so. They talked about that a little bit in the meeting, and it.
Okay. Just wanted to ask.
They only pay a partial. Yeah, so, so they won't pay anything until we put someone back in, can afford to put someone back in.
Okay.
Yeah, then we'll work that out with the school system again.
Perfect.
Our decision is, will we get afford to put higher, or will we put one of them back in? But, you know, since, you know, we've got a lot of it going online right now, it's going to be silly.
Right. I appreciate that. I had a nation, that's, that's what I was looking for. Thank you. Good question.
Does anybody else have any questions on that meeting? Moving on, back to the council clerk again for the special health and safety meeting that was right after that finance meeting.
Yes, this was Monday, November nine, Special Health and Safety Committee, five oh five P M. to five forty-seven P M. Members present, Bruce Truca, James Meem, Mark McKeever, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Number one, the Special Health and Safety Committee meeting has been called by committee members for the limited purpose of discussing ambulance service. Number two, ambulance service, the Central Joint Ambulance District has requested a decision from council on whether the city plans to stay in the district or leave before the district's next meeting on November eighteen, twenty twenty. The Chair noted, noted that staying in the district would likely cost the city a projected one hundred and twenty-five thousand to three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars annually. He added that staying in the district would assure that two to three advanced life support, A L S ambulances would be serving the district, but that the city would, could be facing unknown costs, while it's unknown if an ambulance company would even bid on the next contract. The Chair also noted that being in the district would allow the city to control its own ambulance system with known costs, although that may leave many of the county's townships with fewer or more, and more expensive options for ambulance service. Wagner noted that township residents support the city financially in many ways. Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner detailed a proposal it received from Superior Ambulance Service. With one ambulance, the city would face no annual subsidy. With two, the city would face a subsidy of five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. Ken Truex of Superior noted that it is open to a one-year contract, but would consider a longer one. A discussion followed on the costs and benefits of the city funding its own ambulance service. Greg Hershey, president of I A F F Local Number eleven twenty, suggested that the Busiris Fire Department could hire six E M S workers and provide an ambulance service for a lower cost than Superior. Greg White, eleven twenty Hillcrest, Hillcrest Drive, suggested that hiring six E M S workers through the fire department would cost the city two hundred and seventy thousand dollars annually in salaries, not including benefits. It was noted that a decision on how to fund an ambulance service, should the city decide to leave the ambulance district, can be made later, while the immediate decision before the committee is whether to stay in or leave the district. It was noted that if the city decides to leave the district, its stated withdrawal would be October thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, so that it would not have a vote or dish on district matters beginning January one, twenty twenty-one. McKeever made a motion to request emergency legislation, directing the city's representative on the sea, on the joint, Central Joint Ambulance District, to notify the district that the city will be leaving the district by the end of this year. Me seconded the motion, which passed three to zero. Number three, Myers adjourned the special meeting at five forty-seven P M.
Does anybody have any questions on that special health and safety report? I'm going to move on then to the special finance committee meeting that met in special session Monday, November sixteenth, which is yesterday. And Mr. McKeever for that report.
Members present, Kevin Myers, Bruce Truca, James Meem, and myself, Chair. The Special Finance Committee meeting was called by committee members for the limited purpose of discussing the twenty twenty-one budget. Two, twenty twenty-one budget, the committee met with Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner, Auditor Joyce Schiffer, Mayor Jeff Reeser, Administrator Kelly Patterson, to discuss items in the twenty twenty-one budget. Specifically, the following items were discussed. A, help outside contracts, the city subsidy to Crawford County Public Health will remain unchanged. B, indigent burials, budgeted amount will remain unchanged. C, ambulance district subsidy will likely be lower in twenty twenty-one. D, tree maintenance, Reeser noted that the budgeted amount will primarily be spent on taking down problem trees and stump removal. A discussion followed on the wisdom of planting trees and tree lawns. E, city share bike path, bike path C O T F grant, the city is waiting on the grant. F, all miller pool improvements, repairs are wrapping up, a discussion followed on the cost of putting in a splash park. G, airport improvement, city waiting on whether F A A. will fully fund installation of parallel trap taxiway via grant program. H, general administration, legal and public advertising, office incidentals, gas and oil budgeted amounts to be decreased. I, general administration postage budgeted amount to be increased. C C E D P, E E D P contribution, a distribution, a discussion followed on whether to contribute fifty thousand, thirty thousand, or another amount. Gallion will be contacted to determine what is, what it is contributing. K, mayor cellphone, council president Kirk Van Kauzer questioned whether lines should be funded if mayor doesn't respond to calls. Reeser offered to have, excuse me, line removed. L, law director, new equipment, new E D P equipment, budgeted amount unchanged with county court system planning changes. M, maintenance slash utility root worker salary, line empty for now, unknown whether hire will be made. N, land, lands and building, lands and buildings, building improvements, a discussion followed on how to fund the paving in the city, parking lots and new sidewalk construction, including creating line item, dedic, line items dedicated for the, those purposes. O, codified code enforcement, oh, okay, long day. Code enforcement salary, the commitment, committee expressed an interest in keeping office funded. P, Wagner noted that a retirement is expected early next year in the utility office. The committee scheduled a special meeting for December seventh at four thirty P M. For the limited purpose of continuing discussion on the twenty twenty-one budget. I asked for a motion to adjourn special finance committee meeting, motion by Myers, seconded by me, motion passed by voice vote. Meeting adjourned at five thirty-two P M.
Anybody have any questions on that special finance committee meeting? There are none. Traffic Commissioner report, Mr. Reeser.
We have no report tonight. If there's any questions, anybody got any?
Have you got any comments about the new street lighting downtown committee?
Negative ones, that's all. That's all the first bad comments.
You've heard bad comments?
Yeah. They wonder why were we wasting time, money, putting lights on when downtown was perfect the way it was.
I ran into a nice.
I haven't heard a first big comment, so.
I have heard only positive comments about it.
I don't, I don't, well, I'm glad you did, but if you're overlying, question I'm getting is, what's wrong with the lights? It's been that way for ten years, it's beautiful, why are they messing with it? Why don't they worry about something important?
It's interesting. I've had nothing, I've had nothing but positive, I mean, we need, we need to get together and see who's, see who's, and I want to weigh it out. You're getting all the negative ones, and I'm getting all the positive ones.
Well, you just asked me, I'm just telling you what I hear, so.
I was taking flags down with, what, after, oh, gosh, sorry, two, Monday or Tuesday after Veterans Day, I was taking them down with Bill Colley, Dave Alders, and Tim Lay, County Commissioner Lay. And when we were taking them down, we actually got to that section, and I'll be honest, I didn't even notice them. I have not noticed them at all. I'm oblivious to them, apparently, and I'm very attentive when I drive, but I kind of looked up because they started talking about them, and Mr. Lay's comment was, is they don't look any different. He goes, doesn't look any different to me? He goes, it's a different color light. Yep, that's what I think, so. That was, that's the only feedback I've ever heard, so, that's what, but.
I was at the chiropractor's morning, and some lady that, I can't remember her first name, I think her last name's Carter. She goes to Holy Trinity, but she said she's seen them new lights, and she thinks they're really good, she thinks they need to be changed, and she does, she is, she goes to church out at Holy Trinity, and she said that Mr. Reeser has a really nice choir voice.
Oh, I love the whites now. You convinced me.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
I don't believe you unless you say it. Just a couple bars.
We have ninety days, right? We have ninety days, right?
I didn't know it was even going to be put into a ninety-day trial.
I think it did, so. Okay, we'll worry about it after first year, so.
Any other questions for the mayor on the traffic stuff? Okay, we're going to move on to accepting of the committee reports.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
You were on the in favor, right, Kevin?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
You might want to count a few seconds out before.
Well, Lisa, you're probably still muted if you wanted to say anything.
Aye.
Okay. We're going to move on then to the mayor's report.
Oh, thank you. Well, good articles, The Telegraph, former of the weekend, thanks, Gary Goldblatt, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but thanks, Rhonda, and Randy, your.
I just saw that the article appeared in the Ashland newspaper and the Marion Star.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Well, enthusiasm, and it's just catching, you know? And we're going forward with everything, you know, what COVID does, it may give us, you know, we're, we're all in a tough spot, so, but I appreciate you guys, you know, all the work you're doing. It's like you said, it only comes once every two hundred years, and there's a couple things that really, we have to give our next generation a sense of ownership of this community, because we're not going to be here forever, so. And Wanda gave a very passionate address, we, you know, if you have a family member who's had COVID, which I've had quite a few myself, fortunately know it's been hospitalized, Wanda unfortunately has a family member who passed, and, you know, it becomes its home. So it's getting closer and closer to us, and I think we got to, she also had the issue with the health board, which is helping work, and it comes down to numbers, you know, you got to keep those folks working, we got to keep the hospital frontline working, really so much doesn't come down to who has it, who doesn't, just how many have to be hospitalized, and we've got to keep our hospital, and that's why the governor's so adamant about it, and we've got to keep some capacity in our hospital so we don't get overrun, and we can't take care of car accidents, and if Lou Enzo is coming up, and, you know, everything else that we need to do, so, thank you for telling my thanks again, you know, so, for your interest.
Yeah, she just, she wants to figure out how we can give people notified faster.
That's a good.
We got, we got a health board meeting tomorrow night, and I'm going to bring that up.
Seriously, she is, she was really upset that they told the Board of Elections they would be contacting these people, and had she not found out from a friend of hers on the Board of Elections, she wouldn't have known to quarantine. If they had not stepped up and talked to her in the first place, she wouldn't have even known to quarantine.
That's got to be frustrating, I'm sure.
She didn't, she did not get a phone call until, it was about four thirty last Friday. That's the first time we heard from the Health Department.
My daughter, her family took two weeks, she doesn't live in Providence, but it took two weeks to get the results, and.
Well, and that's just it, that's not even with the results, that's after the Health Department knew this other person should have, that they had been in contact with them, that they should be quarantined.
So, anyway, I'll leave it down on my report, so, because I was, the two people booked tonight did such a good job, I don't need to put an exclamation point on that, so, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for the mayor?
Yeah. Hate to eat a dead horse, but I spent ten minutes on my break today listening to somebody that had a tree put in their tree lawn, and he did not want it. It was just a.
What street was it, spring? We, we gave them a deadline of.
So do you notify them?
Yeah, we sent two letters, I said, last November first.
He said, I never got the letter.
Oh, well, excuse me, yeah. Everybody, if he's a renter, he didn't get the letter, if he is a homeowner, he would have got the letter.
We don't.
He would have got the letter. We sent, we sent two letters out, we gave a deadline, and even people that have called after the deadline, we, we've accommodated.
I thought you said you were.
Somebody called yesterday and didn't want a tree, and we still said, okay, you know, they have plenty of chances, a lot of stuff, they've already bought, paid for it, so, that's the issue, so.
I want to let him know about it.
Kevin called, Kevin called.
Well, that's, I've mentioned that, he said, that's why I voted for you.
Take it for that.
Of course, there's ten people in break room, so.
I know, but I don't know what I said, so.
Yeah.
We give mayor opportunity.
Does anybody else have any questions for the mayor? Going to move on to the Safety Service Director report.
Thank you, we have one referral, we refer, we have a garbage truck that needs repaired to go to finance.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Dunn is working with the contractor and punch to us, we still got a few things to go there. Friendship Bridge is now open, if you've had a chance to walk it, you know it's nice and sturdy, and did a beautiful job on it. Repairs are much more extensive than we thought, but it's good to go, and it's going to last a long time, a nice addition to the park area. Good news on the Sandusky River tracks, which we've been trying to get fixed for years and years and years. The paving is scheduled to be started either later this week or the first of next week, so the street will be closed for two to three days. Garbage pickups are always rearranged around Thanksgiving, we will put, post this on our website and on Facebook page. And then we have a water line replacement that will be starting on East Oakwood Street from East Street to Hopely, and we're planning to start that tentatively next week or the week of November thirtieth. We expect to, to last three to four weeks, and one lane of traffic will be maintained during that time. There may be some parking restrictions, so we'll get through it. That's it, that's Jeff's report.
Does anybody have any questions about the, Mr. McKeever?
The railroad crossing, are they going to pave further out than what they did the last time they did that?
Yes, yes, it's going out quite a bit more.
I sure hope so, because that's what makes it so bad.
It was, it was, they didn't get that, if you remember when that was done the last time.
Been a while.
It was, it was done middle of December, and it was just a quick job, they, all the asshole plans were, but we had to bring that asshole in from Cincinnati, and just was a joke the whole way, so, and so, thank goodness we're going to ship them in, and they're coming back the next year to do lane. I think lane and wall, I believe, next year, there's a couple more, so, two more, it's on that schedule, lane's on rush.
Yeah, lane isn't some very.
I'd say is Whitestone on the list?
Whitestone is, Whitestone was just done.
Yeah, it's horrible.
Well, there's two lanes, there's two tracks there, one is owned by CSX, is one is leased to, the one that was leased has not been done yet, and that, that could be done next year, too, we're, we're looking at it.
And that, that could be done next year, too. We're, we're looking into that, too. They just, so one of the tracks is finished. The other one is horrible.
Yeah, if, if you look at, the one that was finished looks bad, too, already.
It's always frustrating.
Because, and I think it's because it wasn't all burned.
Um, yeah, I know, but they're two different owners for the.
Mansfield Street?
Yes.
Was it, or West Mansfield?
Yeah.
Out by the concrete plant. And as somebody was saying, I swear, I heard a couple weeks ago that somebody saw a car go over there, and one of the railroad ties actually popped up.
They actually, that was actually done recently. I can check into this.
Okay, and somebody said they actually saw the car was going over, and it actually crossed the railroad tie and popped up.
That's not, well, thanks for letting me know. We'll check that out tomorrow.
Absolutely.
We'll check it out tomorrow.
It's going west.
And west of here.
The tie is so loose.
Oh, that's not good.
Yeah, it's really bad.
That's not good. Thank you. We'll, we'll check on that, uh, tomorrow.
Uh, Mr. President, I can speak to Mr. Foote's question. Kevin Myers brought that up two weeks ago. Um, and I asked Mr. Weiger about it the next day, and he has indicated that, uh, he has reached out to the railroad numerous times. They haven't gotten back to him, or they have, and they said they would do it, but they haven't, and he told me this was two weeks ago, that he would reach out to them again, and.
Okay, you can only, you can't make a railroad do stuff. We know that, so.
Railroad has more authority than the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hill.
You're welcome.
Uh, any last questions for the Safety Service Director's report? There are none. Mr. Ratliff, you have a report.
Uh, no, not really. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I will, uh, attest, as someone who is disproportionately affected by the laws of gravity, that the Friendship Ridge is much more sturdy now. But other than that, I have nothing. Thank you, sir.
You're not supposed to write your question.
Mr. Trucco?
So what are the next houses that you're going to, uh, remove, yeah, this year?
Uh, thank you for asking. I was gonna, uh, I was gonna mention that. The, uh, Lucas Street House, uh, we received a phenomenal bid, uh, for the demo on that Lucas Street House, so I expect, uh, we'll enter into an agreement and get that done, uh, post haste.
I seen them out there scouting it out, and I was like, Steve, turn this down for us.
Yeah, we, we, we had, we tried to give as many bids, because the, the original, the first couple of bids that came in were, were really high. Um, Blicky Street, uh, CIC needs to have a meeting, uh, to discuss. There's a potential end user for that one that wants to rehab it. There's some grant money available, uh, to do the rehab. Um, I spoke with them, uh, actually last week, so, uh, they're, they're very interested in that. Um, and I think that's, that's all we have on the radar right now for, for demo for this year. Those were the, the two that we received from, uh, the tax foreclosures. Uh, we have a hearing set, not this coming Tuesday, not a week from today, but two weeks from today, on the Whitestone Street property. Court's deciding what to do with that. Um, if that's awarded to the city, then that's something.
Is that the one with the broken-out windows?
No, that's the one that, that we demoed last year. That was the trailer, the, uh, manufactured home that was, that was on fire, that had caught on fire and sat there empty for a couple years.
It was right almost at the intersection of Whitestone and Hopely, right there, almost right at the corner.
Right.
That one that he's talking about with the broken windows.
Yeah, so those are the two, those are the ones that are set for demo.
I gotta follow up.
Yep.
Uh, what's the status of, uh, of the house on, uh, uh, where we did, uh, Wood Lawn, and it's just one, one street.
Highland.
Of Union.
Failure.
Is it failing? Yeah.
The house fire that's not down now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, uh, that is scheduled for demo, but that, the owner is, uh, doing the demo on that.
Yeah, that, that's gotten a hundred times worse. Like, half of it's down now.
Yeah, and that's, I think that is their, uh, slow-motion demo, uh, process. I'll, I'll follow up and see where he's at on that. Uh, that's, um, one of our local.
Safety concerns there.
Yeah, that's one of our local property owners. We, we went through, uh, a lengthy process. That was in court for a very long time, uh, continuing to ask for more time to try and fix it, more time to try and fix it, and we were adamant that it just had to be demoed, and finally, uh, everyone's agreed with us that it needs to be demoed. But that's one that the owner's doing.
Is there anything on the Wayse property?
No, uh, they are both, um, you know, um, our, our last, our last reports were that they were in, in, in a home, um, so that's one of those ones. Income taxes are piling up on it, um, and it'll probably, and we have a couple of options, and, and none of them are good. One is to wait to, for a tax foreclosure. Um, that could be a decade. Um, the, the other is we can petition the court to take it over, um, but then we're gonna have to have a plan in place to abate those problems. And, and that's gonna be an expensive, uh, solution there. I know that that one has a tremendous impact on, on the neighborhood. Um, there, there are significant concerns regarding infestation and some other issues, uh, with that property. So we're gonna have to come up with some sort of a long-term solution on that, but right now, um, the, the owners are, it's, it's one of those properties that the owners simply are unable to take care of.
Was there a house on East Street? I heard something. I just, that's a question. I don't know.
There, there, there may be. Um, I can, I can check if we have something on East Street. I know we, I know we have some in the property maintenance system on East Street, but, um, any specific one or not?
No, I don't know. I, I just have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mary Street, what's, that's in CIC? Did we put that in CIC?
That, that is in CIC, that, uh, the current tenants, uh, after the last meeting, not two weeks ago, I guess, uh, I'll give you the exact date for you, um, uh, given the thirty-day notice to vacate. The party that was interested in purchasing it, purchasing it on behalf of the tenants has indicated that he is not able to complete that purchase. So that's a property that, uh, we, as part of CIC meeting, will probably just put up for auction. Um, Council had previously indicated a minimum acceptable bid of seventeen thousand five hundred, and so it'll probably just go up for, uh, public auction at that, at that price.
Were we waiting on an appraisal for the one on, where the old school was on Wood, Wood Lawn?
Appraisal on the lot?
Yeah.
Um, that, and there are, uh, there's another adjoining lot or two that may become available as well.
Right beside it? Contiguous, or?
Yeah, they're, they're contiguous. I, I'm pretty sure. I'd have to look at the map, but that, yeah, because it was like L-shaped and like one to cut through. But there's a couple other lots that, uh, one may be coming through Land Bank, another, uh, with a demo, um, that may be coming back to the city, so it, it creates a bigger lot there. The, the one that was part of that project that, uh, from the demo of the school that was turned over to the city by the state, where, wherever they're supposed to build some houses, um, that one is no longer under the sale restrictions. I do know the neighbor is interested in acquiring that.
Highly interested.
Yes.
Fully interested.
Yeah, um, but we also have the other lots that are, that are coming in with the housing study and, and looking for, uh, places to build houses. Uh, the last time we talked about it.
That person contacted me this week about that, and.
Yep.
I was really thinking about it, and I feel like if we sell it in any way other than an auction, somebody, because of it being a former school, somebody's gonna be like, well, I, I didn't know about it, and I wanted to bid on it, because.
That's the benefit of advertising.
Well, and, and, and that, and if you recall, that was the conversation we had when we, uh, a few meetings back, was with the other lots that are coming, that, that we may potentially be able to acquire, uh, both through Land Bank and through a demo, there may be as many as three or four buildable lots, and we talked about putting them all out to bid, um, because we've seen, we've seen the interest that some of our builders have for lots that, that, that can be built upon. So it's a, it's an air, it's, it's a nice area. It's close to parks, close to the fairgrounds, um, where, where houses could be built.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure we were still moving, trying to move that towards something.
Yes.
Rather than just sitting out, because we could, we could then use any money from the sale to tear down more.
Yes.
Abandoned houses and things, which we definitely need the money for.
Yeah, and.
Yeah, and if we could use it for that, could we use?
Capital improvements. If, if, any of the, any of the money that we acquire from selling land or lots that we acquire, uh, goes into capital improvement, so it can be used for parking lots, if you wanted, uh, or demos, or any, any of those sorts of things.
Or fixing houses up before you demo them?
Well, there, there, I hope in, after the first of the year, we'll be able to make a pretty significant announcement about, uh, partnership with the courts and doing some rehab work on housing.
Hey, what was the status of the Pines Reservoir? You had some.
We, we hope to.
Group of people involved?
There, there is a group that, uh, wants to make a proposal to council, probably the first week of December. Um, we've, we'll kind of update the committee a little bit on Thursday. I checked with Mr. Hill, actually, earlier today, and he indicated that it remains in an open project. But there is a group interested in, uh, they have access to grant funding. Uh, the short of it is, they're interested in acquiring it, uh, rehabbing the, the land and turning it into a public-use space, uh, with the end goal of turning it over to Crawford Park District, um, so that they could, uh, maintain and operate it.
Does anybody else have any questions? Kevin or Lisa, do you have any questions?
Not at the moment.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the auditor's report.
Yes, the auditor's, uh, here this evening. She has have, uh, does have some referrals for the Finance Committee. An appropriation is needed in the seven fifty Solid Waste Fund slash seventy-five fifteen Solid Waste Management slash twenty-four Materials and Supplies to cover repairs to one of the garbage trucks. And you'll note that that was referred to the Finance Committee already by the, um, sort of Safety Director. I don't have the exact number yet. Hopefully, we'll have it by Thursday. An appropriation is also needed in eight oh two Fire Pension Fund slash seventy-one fifteen Fire Department slash twenty-one Personal Services in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to pay the December pension payment. This will be from the transfer indicated below, and below, a transfer is needed in the General Fund from within Program One Security Persons and Property slash seventy-one fifteen Fire Department slash twenty-one Personal Services to seventy-one fifteen Fire Department slash twenty-seven. Transfers in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to transfer to the eight oh two Fire Pension Fund to pay the December pension payment. I will have the necessary paperwork for Thursday's committee meeting, any other budgetary matters, and so we need a, uh, two referrals, one for appropriations and one for, uh, that one transfer.
Motion for that?
So moved.
Second, open, what? Oh, second.
Second.
Okay, I have discretion as to who I heard first.
Doesn't matter.
Kevin, we'll go with Kevin on made the motion, and Lisa seconded it. There's, there's a delay in the phone, so I gotta account for that. They probably said it first. Okay. Do we have to accept this?
Oh, also, um, we have to accept and file the statement of cash position dated October thirty-one. You received that two weeks ago.
Mr. President, point of order?
Mr. Myers?
We had a first and a second, no vote on those appropriations?
That is true. I need to back up. All in favor of the appropriation and the, or referrals to the, for the appropriation and the, uh.
Transfer.
Transfer, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Myers. The statement of cash positions that the auditor has, need a motion to.
So moved.
Accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Okay. There's nothing of treasure, right?
Uh, that was submitted, uh, for this week, and that is for your review for two weeks. That's the, our.
Okay, it's right there. Okay, no police chief, no fire chief. Need a motion to accept all the city officers' reports.
So moved. Second.
Uh, okay, Lisa was, made the motion. Kevin seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Visitors input regarding the standing or special committee reports. Does anybody want to have comment on any of those reports? Okay, there's none. Do we need a recess?
No, please.
Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
Yes, we have two resolutions. Resolution number two forty-two, twenty twenty. Authorizing and directing the Bisciris Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bisciris, Ohio, to accept ownership and maintenance of Crawford County Water and Sewer Utilities and to accept transfer of existing water and sewer balances from Crawford County and declaring an emergency that's referred back to the Service Committee. Resolution number two forty-three, twenty twenty. Authorizing and directing the Bisciris Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bisciris, Ohio, to notify the Central Joint Ambulance District that the City of Bisciris will withdraw from the Central Joint Ambulance District by December thirty-one, twenty twenty, with an effective date of withdrawal of October thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, with the understanding that the city will not be a voting member of the Central Joint Ambulance District beginning January one, twenty twenty-one, and declaring an emergency that's referred to the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay, need a motion to accept those as a first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Those are referred back to originating committee. Public participation, is there any member of the general public who wants to present their input or comments on the legislation that was read for the first time? Nobody from the public wants to participate on that. Committee report on pending legislation. Uh, Service Committee?
Service Committee is favorable to the resolution two forty-two dash twenty twenty. That's accepting the water lines from, uh, Crawford County and the Sewer District.
And then Health and Safety, Mr. Myers?
Health and Safety is favorable to resolution two forty-three, twenty twenty, the Central Joint Ambulance District membership.
And, uh, consideration of legislation for the third time?
Yes, we have one ordinance. This is ordinance number thirty-eight, twenty twenty, an ordinance amending the traffic control map and file established by ordinance twenty-seven to seventy-eight and sections three zero five point zero one, three zero five point zero two, and three zero five point zero three of the codified ordinances of the City of Bisciris, Ohio, by accepting the street plaque and dedication filed by former Mayor Dan Ross on November four, two thousand and five. And, uh, Health and Safety already favored this several weeks ago.
Need a motion to accept that as a third reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation, is there any member of the general public wants to present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the third time? They're shaking their head no. So, further consideration of pending legislation. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number thirty-eight dash twenty twenty?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I've got, uh.
Focus, second.
Uh, McKeever?
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Um. Ordinance number thirty-eight dash twenty twenty is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution two forty-two dash twenty twenty, which is the transfer of the water, county water line, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Trucco?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Resolution number two forty-two, twenty twenty.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two forty-two dash twenty twenty?
So moved. Second.
Vote? McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Resolution two forty-two dash twenty twenty is duly adopted. Resolution 242-2020 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution 243-2020, which is the Central Joint Ambulance District membership, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Resolution number 243-2020.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 243-2020?
So moved.
Second.
Vote?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Ordinance number 243-2020 is duly adopted, and I will say that that has been many, many years in the making. Okay, new and un, new, I'm backing up, unfinished business. We, we did make the referral on the tri, oh, we need to make a referral on a treasurer's salary to the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
We'll go with Kevin on made the motion, and Doug seconded it. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Um, I guess this is kind of old business, because it was discussed at the meeting last night. Creation of a new line item for parking lot paving, does anybody want to make a motion to refer that creation of to the Finance Committee?
You want to change that to, like, sidewalks and, maybe?
Um.
Or just want to keep it separate?
Well, you, you guys can hash that out on Thursday, but I guess we'll, we'll make the motion.
Can we not make it that it would just be line-specific, can be determined by Finance? That we can put any item in a line-specific, it doesn't have to say, it has to be strictly...
Yeah, because that gives you the ability to create whatever specific line.
Yeah, so I guess I'm gonna entertain a motion for the creation of a line item, a new line item in the Finance Committee.
There you go. That away, that's open-ended. I'll, I'll make the motion, sure, why not?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Have a fun fall.
Okay, new miscellaneous, Thanksgiving, on November 26 and 27, the city offices are closed. December 3, Candlelight Christmas, 5 to 8 p.m., downtown Bucyrus.
Mr. President?
Mr. Myers?
Also, in conjunction with the Candlelight Christmas evening, we're gonna take the, the fourth and final installment of the Fall movie series, and try to arrange for that movie, The Santa Claus, to be played that evening downtown, rather than on Friday, the 11th, as originally planned.
Hey, you got a minute since he kind of made that announcement? Is it okay if I take a quick second?
You can do whatever you want, Doug.
Well, I just, the, if everybody may have noticed already, the Santa House is sitting in Shines Art Park. The Kiwanis Club has put the Santa House there this year. If you will notice, there is now a mail slot on the Santa House as well. The reason for that being, with COVID and everything being the way that it is, we are not sure if Santa will actually be able to make it to the house this year to visit the children. So we are giving them the ability to get their letters in there, and we can make sure that he at least gets their letters and gets them mailed back to them. So that will be there that night, so make sure that if you come up and enjoy, have your kiddos bring their letters with them, just in case Santa's not able to make that appearance, so we can have those letters gotten to him, and he can get a response back to the kids, so.
Is there gonna be a parade?
At this point in time, there is no scheduled parade due to COVID as well. Here again, social distancing, and even though it's outdoors, people tend to cram in like sardines on the sidewalks right there, so rather than having everybody cram together, we're probably gonna forego that this year.
This is devastating news. I never realized the Santa situation until it was just mentioned right now, but there's gonna be a lot of kids that this probably will be something they never forget this year.
Santa's a little bit old, so you gotta be careful.
Well, if Santa gets hit with COVID, then nobody's getting their presents.
He's probably late.
He's high-risk.
It's very high-risk.
He's high-risk.
But they did say that he will respond to the kids with a letter this year. So even though they won't get a sign on his lap, he will make sure that they know that he got their letter.
I hope they do something. Special Finance, we have another Special Finance Committee meeting on the 2021 budget at December, on December 7, 4:30 Council Chambers. Don't need to excuse anybody, because the only ones not here are phoned in. I don't think we have, do we gotta excuse the auditor?
No.
We don't have to excuse her?
Nope.
Um, Mr. Hill, what do we have for the joint regular meetings?
We've got six we referrals, we have the treasurer's salary, the council members' salaries were already referred to Finance two weeks ago. Those don't necessarily have to be brought up on Thursday, they have to be addressed before the May primary deadline, so that will not be for Thursday, necessarily. We have the library appointments, that's from Council of Economic Development.